So you put it like.
Yeah, it's no automatic.
All right, we're gonna call this meeting to order for the village board for Monday, February 24th. Could I have a roll call, please?
Trustee Brosius.
Here.
Trustee Zambler.
Here.
Trustee Francois.
Here.
Trustee Thucius.
Here.
President Leifeld.
Here.
Trustee Thorensen.
Here.
Trustee Calbord.
Here.
Want to mention that we are video recording.
Okay.
And so we're testing out that, we're testing out that equipment because we've been having issues with voice recording and uploading to the website.
All right, very good. So everybody knows we're being videotaped tonight. All right, let's stand for a pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we're at public comment. This is an opportunity for anyone to address the village board on any issue not on the current agenda. Please observe the time limit of three minutes while the village board encourages input from residents that may not discuss or act on any issue that is not duly noticed on the agenda. So do we have items that are not on the agenda?
I do. I do have six who had thought out for a public comment. The first one is Beth Cuthbert, 2840 Dennis Street, and it's in regards to budget and future planning.
Um, I've been reading all of your documentation over the last couple of weeks, and I noticed that I couldn't find anything that reviews what has happened in the past, such as when the mountain bike trail came to town. Has it been looked at since then to see if it brought any benefits to the community in terms of the economy? Has it cost the community anything in terms of maintenance costs? How many noise complaints? And it looks like we're doing, the village is doing a lot of new things to try bringing people in, but not going back and looking to see if anything is working. And with the debt of the village, I would hope that we take a moment to look to the past before we overspend in the future, so that we can have a community that can afford nice things. So I hope you take some time to review previous projects and decide if they are successful, unless I am missing some form of documentation out there that reviews these topics.
Thank you.
Okay, next I have Mike Womar, 7029 Lothenberg Boulevard regarding ATVs and UTVs at board meetings.
Thank you. Again, Mike Womar here in Cross Plains. I wanted to just let the board know that the campaign against the ATVs is growing daily right now. Our petition is growing substantially. We're anxious to present that information to you at the appropriate time. I'd also like to make mention and comment about the conduct and the way the last board meeting was handled. I have to deal with Robert's Rules of Order in my professional life. And looking at our code ordinances and Chapter Two regarding the management of meetings, we were woefully in, not in compliance with Robert's Rules of Orders. And what have you, I call your attention to Section Eight, Procedures, and subsections C, D, E, F, and H, all of which were violated at the last meeting. Thank you.
The next one is from Dave Stotts, ATV, UTV, 3080 St. Francis Street.
My name's Dave Stotts. I live at 3080 St. Francis Street. And I just wanted to voice my opinion that I am in favor of the ATV, UTV ordinance that's on the table. I have given this a lot of thought. A lot of our members on our club are firemen, they're EMTs, businessmen, volunteer coaches for youth sports. Myself was one at one time, volunteers at the Legion, longtime residents and neighbors. And our members are pretty passionate about all this talk about we're not gonna be safe. And I know a couple of the members that are at our club are very passionate about making sure everything is safe. And I know a policeman cannot be there if there is a problem sometime. However, ourselves would be also policing our members if somebody's out of line. So just something I'd love to say. Thank you.
Okay, next I have Tim Heneman, 4861 Brewery Road.
Okay, I'm here. It's, I'm not really quite a village resident. I missed it by one lot line. Anyway, I would like to say thank you to the village and the police department for allowing the police department to unlock my daughter's car and rescue one of the two-and-a-half-year-old twins this last February day when she was visiting. Where you're not really supposed to do that, but I thought I would say thank you very much. It makes everybody happy. Thank you.
Douglas Longmore, 2223 Mill Street, ATV and UTV.
Thank you. I wanted to just take a few moments to express some personal feelings and thoughts about this topic, which only came to my attention recently, within the last two and a half to three weeks. And being a newer resident of Cross Plains Village, I have been here for three and a half years. I live in a very beautiful little neighborhood across the street from the American Legion Hall. I have the pleasure of looking out my window on a daily basis and observing all of the children playing in the park. Many of the children and our neighbors walking the streets daily, riding bicycles with their families, without their families. Key point there. And while I appreciate the gentleman's sharing that the group would police themselves in the absence of our police force's ability to continually monitor these situations, I must express my concern, the prospect of seeing ATVs and UTVs driving on the streets, which lack sidewalks in many portions of our neighborhoods where these children are walking freely, without parental guidance and handholding, going to and from the school, to and from the pool, and to and from various activities within the village. I am not opposed to ATVs and UTVs. I happen to think they're a lot of fun. But I do not feel that they belong on the public streets of a small village who is ill-equipped to police the use of those. If it does get passed, I will be one who will be out there with my phone, and I will be taking video and pictures, and unfortunately burdening the police force with tracking down possibly untrackable offenses. I would hope it doesn't come to that, but I state my opposition to this proposal.
Jennifer Bonty, 2710 Elmwood Circle East, ATV, UTV.
Just for three minutes of comments and then a couple of housekeeping questions. The ATV, UTV ordinance is expected to be on the village board meeting agenda at the end of next month. I know the trustees have received feedback from me and other residents about the proposal. As we head into next month, keep this in mind. Badger ATV Club is an association based on a cooperative spirit of people working together to achieve some definitive purposes. Non-club members are independent resident voices that choose Cross Plains as their home for a variety of reasons. Allowing ATV, UTV roadway use in the village impacts all residents if their request is in everyone's backyard. Understanding the need tolerances from residents about the request at hand isn't achievable unless we hold an all-resident vote or continue to reach out to the board with individual input that represents various degrees of support. One resident said that she was unable to attend today's meeting, but received a response from a trustee who supports a trial period. She was most interested in hearing more about the matrix that the village board will collect and use during the trial period to further evaluate the program's success at the end. She also shared her personal frustration that the interests of the whole community are seemingly being cast aside for the few of interests of a few. So at this time, the only quantifiable information I'm aware of is that there are approximately thirty village residents that are club members, and a hundred and seventy-five or more other residents have said no ordinance by signing a petition. Those numbers suggest that there are more resident voices giving a flat no versus a yes. So here are my questions. So the next safety committee meeting to review the final draft of the ordinance is scheduled for March 3rd. The next village board meeting, presumably to review the ordinance details, is slated for March 23rd. Are those dates and meeting locations at Village Hall confirmed yet? Because I know that Doug had suggested using the fire station for the public safety committee meeting, and another resident suggested a change to the board meeting on March 23rd, since our school district's spring break is the same week. So I'm just wondering where and when those meetings will be held.
Yeah, I, right now, I would assume they're at the locations that we've had them at. If there's a change, that'll be part of the posting.
And there's gonna be some discussion about the next, the March meeting?
Yeah, later on, yeah. But that's not so much on what the topics are. That's making sure we have a core.
That's what I have for a poll of comment.
All right, well, thank you. We are at the consent agenda. On request, any trustee, any item may be removed from the consent agenda for separate consideration under general business. I guess I will ask to have number three taken off.
And then I'd like to have number five taken off.
Then do I have a motion for accepting the consent agenda with the removal of three and five?
Some. Second.
All right, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. All right, down to village report. All right, a couple of things I have. One, I sent out an email for appointments, and I guess I wasn't real clear. What I'm looking for is making sure if you're on your committee, that everybody who's on that committee wants to continue for one year, and then the person or persons who terms are off to find out if they want to continue. I'd like to get the citizen ones going ahead of time. For you guys, I'm gonna wait till the election's over, then ask for your preferences. And for trustees, the terms are always one year.
The library, though, has their own committee. They build their own committee. We don't, we don't, you don't make those, you don't make those appointments for the library committee. I don't believe, you make mine as part of trustee, but I don't think, or do you?
Well, I think last time Pam told me I did. I didn't have to make any last year, so I guess that's unclear. I can ask her again. Next week, we have a staff meeting. I can ask her. She gave me the impression that I did, but maybe I misunderstood that. Yeah. I thought it was just library deal.
Yeah.
Because they're kind of an independent.
Right.
And they're required to have certain members from certain jurisdictions, right? So.
The same would be for the joint review board.
Right. But do I make those appointments, right?
They would make, they would make a, and we would confirm it.
Who's they, though?
Various jurisdictions. So there's.
Oh, I see. Okay. Yeah, that school district.
The UW County.
Right. Okay. All right, the other thing is Jerry, Bill and I met with federal agency for, that's in charge of the fund for economic development from being hit with the flooding. I thought we had a really good meeting. Potentially, we could get matching funds up to $1.5 million for flood mitigation. So that, I think, is pretty positive, and I know Bill's working with seven other agencies to help fill that. So it's looking like pretty reasonable that we might be able to pull this off if all the funding sources come through. The other thing, we're gonna receive another FEMA check for $85,000. The county executive and the county emergency management wanna present it to us. We were originally having it scheduled for this Friday, but the executive couldn't make it, so we're gonna pick a date. He sent us the number of dates in March. As soon as we get that, I'll send it out to you if you want to be there. They kind of want to make a big deal of it. So we'll gain $85,000 more. And then Judy and I and Bill and Tara met to go over some ideas to celebrate our 100-year birthday of the village. So there's some ideas that are being floated around it once we get something a little bit more concrete. We'll get it out to everybody, but I would ask on your committees, with events coming up, if you kind of play that card throughout this year. It could be events that we've done in the past, but throw in that, you know, we're celebrating our 100th birthday. I think if you get a little bit more PR and kind of make them a little bit, even if we can add something to make it a little different, that would be great.
So we've talked about this on the Parks Committee, especially around the potential pavilion that we're planning, the pavilion project of the Lions legacy.
Yeah.
So perhaps if you could just talk to Mike or me, or somehow involve someone from Parks, if you guys have any plans, because there was some talk about incorporating that with.
Yeah, we talked, we talked to Mike about it, so.
Okay. Thanks.
All right, that's all I have to report. Jerry?
I have to report. Our 100-year birthday anniversary, we all went together. I know Tara's looking for a lot of volunteers for our Memorial Day barbecue. She said it's gonna be over a hundred people she needs to volunteer. So she said she's looking for signups for that. We have the chamber banquet coming up in March, so you'll see emails on that also, and everybody's welcome.
All right. Bill?
So there were the spring primary elections, February 18th. We had 504 voters. Decent turnout for our spring primary. Last, at the last meeting, I reported that the public hearing for Capital Area Regional Planning Commission for Creek Crossing of St. Francis and in regards to the urban service area amendment was on March 12th. That's been postponed. More information will come out on that when we learn more. We're hoping that we can get that rescheduled to April 9th, but it's all dependent on the information that we receive from the developer. All I got?
All right, thank you. Any other? Sarah?
I just want to confirm there was one committee appointment that was due to expire in April 2020 for the Parks and Art Committee. And I just want to confirm that Jed Henry will, is looking to stay on for another appointment.
Oh, okay.
And then, but the rest are not due until 2021, so.
Well, just, I just make sure they want to, they can still continue their term.
Yeah, we confirm that.
Okay, very good. Thank you. All right?
We had our public safety meeting, and a lot of it was the discussion for the ATV, UTV. And we're going to have another meeting on March 3rd, just so we can get input for the, well, more of that, actually. Our last meeting was input from the community, and we're going to get some bullet points and present those at our March meeting, village board meeting. Also, the alternate side parking, the chief is going to look in to what options are out there for that. So we'll bring that up at that meeting also.
Very good. Thank you. Anybody else? All right, we will go to general business then. First one on is discussion and possible action on the assignment of the developer agreement for Esser Place, 19 Mill Creek Parkway to MGL Properties LLC. What's that?
I was confused on it. There's a lot of.
Yeah, I can, I can explain. So Esser Place essentially is being sold to MGL Properties LLC. We currently have a development agreement in place with the current owners. There are outstanding obligations as, as far as assessment, property assessment value guarantee. So that would need to transfer over. And then things like easements for the parking area, the rights to that should transfer over to the new owner. A copy of the developer's agreement is in your packet, and we have Jason Needham here to represent MGL Properties LLC. Want to state anything?
Well, like I said to you, Bill, there is, there is one more addition. There's an affirmation of parking easement agreement that the lawyer for the buyer and the seller has drafted that isn't part of this right now, but we, we kind of need it in order to close tomorrow. So Bill has it in the email, and I'm wondering if it's possible that we can add it either tonight or.
I received it late.
Yeah, what, what is it, though?
It's an affirmation of easement from the village over to the new property owner, to you, that parking lot for the commercial businesses.
Basically, the seller or the buyer is worried that if, if he would lose that opportunity to use that, it could affect the value of the.
And that's not in part of the, the original agreement?
No, I just, I got it just today at four o'clock. I think we done it from the lawyer. They've been cleaning up the title.
But that was part of the original developer's agreement.
That's what I thought, yes.
Yeah, so I, I just thought everything was gonna, would transfer over.
It, it will transfer over. They just cleaned it up a little bit.
Okay.
So when you say clean up, did it change anything?
Yeah.
Uh, basically, clean it up to cover, cover.
We have not had the time to review that second agreement. So I received that second agreement late. We hadn't put it on the agenda. We've reviewed the assignment and assumption of the developer's agreement, and that's what is on the agenda.
Okay. All right, so I don't think we're gonna be able to help you tonight then for that second part.
I guess the question was, the lawyer asked if there's any way we can get, if you would have a problem signing it at the next meeting, if we can find out tomorrow morning, if you could review it and give back to us.
We can definitely put it on the next agenda for consideration.
Well, the, the only other thing is to have a short board meeting with that as an agenda. But I, I, I agree. I think we need to, from the village perspective, we need to look it over and make sure everything's okay, and obviously notice it. So people, yeah, I'm surprised it's a separate document, because clearly I know when that got built, that was the agreement all along. But I didn't know we did two different agreements.
We don't. This is, this is new.
Oh, this, okay.
Why wasn't it, why wasn't it carried over then? In other words, we, we agreed that they could use that parking lot. I mean, it was public, but they could use it.
The language is in the assignment document. Their attorney is asking for an additional document to affirm that the easement gets transferred to the new property owner.
I see. So they didn't like how it was written to the first one. They wanted it as a separate document then. Okay.
And it's not changing spots, or like that's not changing anything, right?
No, but we can't do it, because it's not, no, it's, I'm just, that, I remember that discussion very clearly, and it was agreed upon and everything. So what they want is, obviously, there's some language that their attorney's not comfortable in this alone and wanted shore it up a little bit. That's what I'm taking from all of this. So I, I, I guess we'll just have to, we can work with Bill, and we'll try to see what we can do and get people here for a short.
What time is the closing?
10:00 AM.
Tomorrow morning?
Yes.
We gotta pause, we gotta pause 24 hours ahead of time.
Yeah. Well, that's gonna be hard. I'll buy breakfast.
Can we, we can pass the document now, but you're saying that they want more? We can't, because we haven't seen it.
No, we're gonna pass this document. We can't pass the new one. Because frankly, our attorney should take a look at it.
Absolutely.
So I, it's unfortunate. I'm, I don't know what, how to get around it, to be honest with you.
I don't know either.
So I guess the attorneys are gonna have to do it, but we will try to work what we can as fast as we can. I guess it's the best I can do. Thank you. Saying for our commitment right now. All right.
Make a motion that the village board approve the assignment of development agreement at Esser's Place to MGL Properties.
Do I have a second?
I will second it.
Any discussion? Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. All right, discussion and possible action regarding Resolution 202-2020, Resolution for action related to climate change and environmental stewardship to create a more sustainable village.
So just a disclosure, this will be Resolution 01. Yes, 2020, since we switched spots. And actually, no. Never mind. You did pass that as part of the agenda, so this is 02. Yes, 2020. So this, this resolution is in regards to a couple of requests made by the Sustainability Committee. Sustainability Committee has been working hard to put together a survey to issue to the community and to ask about future steps it should take and define a role. If included in that is the possibility of a sustainable sustainability plan for the village, and if the survey said find that there is want to move forward, or that the committee, the community desires such a plan that the Sustainability Committee become a permanent committee. The copies of the resolutions are in your packet. We have numbers of the Sustainability Committee here. A copy of the survey is also included in your packet.
Okay, I guess, I just want some clarification. What, I thought what we were looking at today, and again, this one says 01 up on the top of the one for the resolution.
There's two of them.
Oh, okay. That we don't have to decide tonight to make the committee permanent. What they're asking for is basically to get permission to send up a survey as the first step of the process. Am I reading that right?
Correct. So the decision to whether the committee becomes permanent or not does not need to be made tonight. They're forecasting that or foreshadowing that if the surveys return with favorable responses. But you can, you can make a decision on the Sustainability Committee at a later point.
Yes. It could be made tonight, or it could be made at a later point. The way the resolution's written is not entirely clear, but I think it reads, you can read it any way.
So which, which resolution, one or two? I mean, they got two resolutions. I'm confused.
The resolution that you see is 02.
Okay, that's what we're talking about.
The resolution 01 was made in committee by the committee.
Correct.
Okay.
The resolution we're looking at approving today is 02. The board's looking at it. Does that make sense?
It does. But why don't we get a motion on here, because I, because we need to talk about this, because I'm a little confused with the survey, if it'll get us to where the resolution wants to get us to. So do I have a motion to accept the resolution, and does that include the survey that's attached? Or is that a separate thing?
No, the resolution includes the survey.
Yeah, the resolution will authorize the survey.
And we're talking about 02, not 01?
02.
Okay.
Yeah, 02.
I'll move to approve the resolution for action related to climate change and environmental stewardship to create a more sustainable village, Resolution 02-2020.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, let's go to discussion then. So I guess reading the survey, I'm trying to figure out what answers from the survey would indicate village residents want this to be a permanent committee. That's the part I'm kind of, I mean, it, it, it covers a lot of topics, but that's not one of them. So in the resolution, it says we shall consider doing it, but depending on the survey.
Yeah. Uh, I think the intent here is that if the responses come back and people say, I don't care, I don't know, other, and there's no response or there's no collective response, then there's no need for the sustainability to, to make a sustainability plan and then continue. If there is support for one or all or many of these, that would be included in a sustainability plan. That would be executed, written and executed by the Sustainability Committee.
Yeah, question number six actually addresses that exact item. So what options would you support to encourage greater sustainability in the village? Check all that applies. The first one is to develop a, a village sustainability action plan. Second one is to, in regards to renewable energy for village operations. Third, renewable energy options for homeowners. Four, education forums at a school or the library. Five, environmental service learning projects with the school students that do service work. None, and then other. So I, I think that, that, the, the point of the survey is to give a direction of whether or not the community supports sustainability, whether you call them projects or initiatives as a whole. Like...
Go ahead, Judy.
And then, okay, so let's say they do, on six, they say, yes, we want to have education forums at the school or library. So this committee then would be the ones that would have to do that. Is that what you're saying?
The committee would develop a plan to take some actions and prioritize these and start, the plan would include prioritizing and start taking some of these actions. Whether it's them doing it themselves or groups doing it or writing grants to hire people to do it. I, that's to be determined. Bill?
A couple of things. One is first two questions. Most of the other questions give the residents an out whether they want to do something or not. The first two just don't. It's just, which one, which one are you, which one do you want to do? I mean, there is an other, you know, but everything else, you know, says no or I don't, I don't, you know, I don't think the village should be involved in this and so on and so forth. And I think that's a good response in there. So I would just be a little mindful of that. And then I, I'm a little, a little, I just want to question the, the intent. So like some of these questions are, you know, do we want the village to say, you know, on dry days, whatever we define or the sustainability defines as a dry day or a dry period of time that, you know, then the village doesn't water their lawn? I mean, it becomes a fine, I mean, that, that's the type of thing that kind of was questioning when I was going through this questionnaire is how, um, how much, how much will the Sustainability Committee be empowered to do versus the village trustees?
Okay.
And I mean...
Can I just answer that?
Yeah.
I never see committees making the decision except for the police commission who has statutory...
Correct.
Power and authority to do it and we don't.
Right.
Committees always bring recommendations to the board, okay? So they may recommend that on one here prohibit lawn watering during extended dry weather. They may say if we have three weeks of no rain, it would kick in that we would ask people to voluntarily do it. Or we would say people on even side of the street can water on even day. You know what I mean? They would come up with something. But it's better, I believe, to have the committees work at, on those things and then bring it back. It would take us forever to go through this and come up with everything. So that's what you want committees to work on. So no, I would never give them the authority that they could pass a watering restriction for the village. That clearly has to come from the board. Kevin?
Yeah, I just want to say is being involved with Sustainability Committee and on the committee that developed this survey, the survey is just simply there to take the temperature of the folks in the village and get an idea of is there interest in this or not? And if there is interest, where does the interest lie? The, the plan would be a little bit more directed and have some more specifics and recommendations possibly. That plan, of course, before it's approved, would come to the board for full approval. And then any steps therein thereafter, I mean, it's dependent, I guess, on what those steps are, but certainly any steps that require board approval will come to the board. If there's other that are, don't, then that'll be clearly laid out the plan. So I think the, the goal here is, or the, the request here through the resolution is to get the survey out in a timely manner so it can go through the process, which has been recommended, which is through Boy Scouts food drive physically. So it's in people's hands and then also it would be online. Um, that food drive is sort of driving the immediacy of the, of the survey. And then I would just ask, make, if you, if you acknowledge Melissa, if she's okay to present or...
Oh, does she want to present something?
Or just at least have a chance to, to say something.
Yeah, Melissa, go ahead.
Did you, Melissa, did you want to say anything?
Yeah, I, I don't want to. She didn't call out anything or raise her hand. I've been watching.
Well, I'm, I'm a board member. I could call on her to...
No, no, that's fine. I just didn't want to put her on the spot.
Yeah, well, she stood up. Melissa Gavin is the chair of the Sustainability Committee.
Hi, Kevin. Thank you and thank you, Jay. We, I'm happy to, to answer questions. I think Kevin's done a fantastic job as a, as a fellow committee member. So I don't think I have anything else to add, but I will just restate that the sustainability was created to guide Cross Plains residents and businesses and government in becoming a community that meets the needs of today without compromising the needs of the future. And in to do so, we want to take the temperature of the community to try to understand where our, where, where's the interest? Where's the knowledge? Where do we, where are the gaps that we need to fill? And so the survey is just an informational gathering tool. And we actually borrowed it from our friends in Middleton. So Middleton issued a similar survey about, probably about ten years ago. We borrowed a lot of these questions and then retooled them to fit Cross Plains, but we're building on, you know, other, other community surveys. So this has been done before. We're, we're using some of their same, their language that helped, has helped inform their plan and the work that they're instituting in Middleton.
Go ahead, Laura.
Sarah.
I'm Sarah, I'm sorry.
Is there a staff member also on that, this committee?
Clearly, I'm sure, yeah.
Do you have the ability to keep doing it, like if it were to become a permanent committee?
It's in my calendar now.
I, I would probably appoint a trustee.
Well, we are, yeah, Kevin's already talking about a staff, you know, like...
Oh, I see.
Village staff.
Yes, the short answer is yes. It, it is something that I've definitely attended and recorded the minutes for, help set up the agendas and I would continue to do that.
Okay, so I have a question for you, ten thousand dollars. Why does it matter if it's a permanent committee or ad hoc committee on moving forward with a plan?
I think we're only through April. That's the big reason. We've got sort of this end coming up pretty soon in April.
Yeah, initially I think it was a one year.
One year?
Oh, I see.
Right.
Yeah, okay. So seeing that the effort that's going into it, how long will the committee?
I think it's August.
August.
Yeah, okay. Thank you, Michael. Okay, then my second question, the one that, there's two areas that are not, have a question and that would be solar and e-transportation. I'm wondering why we didn't...
Solar is in here.
It is? Which one are you seeing solar? I see electricity, but it, it just talks about technologies.
Sustainable.
Jay, it's in a few different questions, actually. There's the question on what should the village do to support greater sustainability? And one of the options is helping homeowners get renewable energy in their, on their homes. There's another question about just reducing use for village, for municipal operations. So it's, it's actually...
So you think most people know renewable would include solar, GO?
I think so.
Okay.
All right. And then number four was kind of about the transportation a little bit.
Well, yeah, that's talking about, but it doesn't really talk about going to electric vehicles.
We, uh, electric vehicles for the village?
Yeah.
Yeah, we included that in the, that was, we, internally, I guess, we included that in the question about should the village go seek not, uh, renew, seek renewable resources for its energy consumption? And electric vehicles, and it was discussed in that question, whether or not it's explicitly called out there.
Can, can we just, would it be tough to put in the definition of renewable? Because we're using that a lot and I'm not sure everybody understands exactly the huge area that that includes.
I would say also sustainability definition too.
That one's a much harder one.
But I mean, for people that don't, that aren't familiar.
Yeah, I know, but I don't know if we, has your group defined it well enough that you can do that? Because I know a lot of people use that word and it means totally different things to different people. Do you have that?
I'll let you.
Bill?
So the thing is, we're talking about terminology. Climate change, I think in the mind of a lot of people, is global. It's not nuclear. It sounds to me like this is more the green, a, a, a green solution than a climate change solution. I mean, and, and, and climate change, I'm just, this is just my, my thoughts, right?
Yeah.
Climate change, it appears is a very political terminology today. It, it is. And I think, I think if you explain this as a green solution, it would certainly make a lot more sense, at least in my eyes.
I, well, it's interesting because I, this weekend I went to a whole day conference on woodland lots, how to manage them and stuff. And one of the section was on climate change. Climate change is happening. The reason for it is where the political debate comes into it. But no one can deny that the climate has changed. You can look at the temperature change. I mean, it went on and on and on. But it's interesting that everybody as individuals, like for this one, they're showing you what they feel will be the trees that will survive in the future with the current, the continuation of things warming up. So as an individual, you still need to make decisions. So I don't have a problem using that term here because while you're right, it's definitely global and it's happened before, you know, climate change has happened before. So it's a natural thing, but you, you still need to adjust to it and plan for it. That's kind of the messaging on this.
But if, if a pit glacier comes in this area, I mean, we're lucky because four have already missed us. So Pitts should miss us also.
Yeah, but, but, you know, but I, I don't have a, I mean, I don't, I'm not gonna fight over it, but I don't think climate change is, is necessarily a negative thing to use. And I think it's more used out there nowadays. I think in the seventies and probably ten years ago, green, going green was much more the, the term. All right, I have Lee then Kevin.
I'm just gonna comment next to Bill. In, in the sense that you think that using the term climate change will just turn people off and they won't want to respond to this thing?
I think it's too big.
Huh?
It's too big.
Okay, well, it's like a lot of things are said, you know, think globally, act locally. You know, that's, that's what we're talking about here is we're acting locally to do things that maybe global warming or whatever you want to call it is too big. But at the same time, you know, everything you do locally has its impact too, so I don't know. I, I, I don't, I don't, the only thing I'm concerned about is if, if you thought that people reading that term would respond negatively to the whole concept of the survey.
I think some people will.
Climate change is not in the survey.
No, I'm trying to see.
Climate change is in the title.
Of the resolution?
Of the resolution.
Yeah, but not in the survey.
No, but it's in the title of the resolution. And it's also, and, and right, it is not in the survey. You're right. I did not see it there. So, so good point.
Pick that. It was personal.
All right, any other discussion on this?
Wait, so we're talking about the, we aren't talking about making it permanent.
No, no. I don't want to do that tonight. I think we should wait for the results of the survey.
But tonight, do we need a motion to do the survey?
Yeah, that's, that's the resolution. Basically, the resolution, how I read this, is to give permission to do the survey. And then it also says we shall at some point consider making it permanent. So it does not say, the resolution says should, shall consider at some time. Right? That's how I'm reading it.
Well, it's, it's, it's fairly clearly written that way. The last word as...
Yeah.
Is what defines that right there.
All right, so let me just, if we approve it tonight, then you're looking to get it out on the fourteenth. Is that it?
Seventh.
Thank you.
Oh, seventh? Saturday the seventh, okay. And then picked up the fourteenth?
Yeah.
Although, um, it'll also be online and available until the end of March.
Okay.
So we'll have hard copies going out to every house in Cross Plains and then electronic version for folks to also fill out online if they choose.
And you're telling them to, to put it in with the food for...
For the pickup on the fourteenth.
For the Boy Scouts and they'll do it.
Yep.
Will they pick up just surveys?
No.
Or they can drop it off.
Or they can drop, and then you can have an instruction sheet to them.
And there's an email on there.
Yeah. Okay, my email.
Can you put this in the newsletter and on social media, the link to the survey?
Problem is the newsletter, the deadline is for March sixth, but I don't know when is the actual newsletter gonna be out?
Uh, usually it's a week after that, so there's about, there should be enough time.
Still wouldn't hurt.
It still would hurt.
Oh, no, no. I just don't want it in the newsletter and then be past the deadline.
Oh, right, right.
If the newsletter doesn't come out to April first, it's silly to have, hey, fill out this survey and the deadline's March thirty-first. You know what I mean? That's what I'm trying to do.
That would be ridiculous.
That was consideration with the committee when you chose the timeframe.
Okay, very good. Well, I certainly appreciate the work your committee has done. Thank you. All right, any other discussion on this? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same? So moved.
Um, Bill Chang, can you put all of the trustees on your news, on the, on the email list to be included?
Yep.
We don't focus on the committee either. Did we miss that?
Um, yeah.
Oh, I, I don't think to introduce them.
Yeah, they're all here. And you guys approved them.
No, I got that.
Yes, we did.
Before you go meet?
No, I made it a, they were just a voluntary committee. I made them an ad hoc committee in August. I went to one of their meetings and said we should formalize this.
Do you want me to read the names right now? The names of the Sustainability Committee are Stephen Douglas, John Berant, Michael Polakowski, Melissa Gavin, who you heard from, and me, Kevin Guzzi.
No, we're just, they might have to know who was on the committee.
And they're, I think they're here. Oh, they're in the...
Yeah, they're all here. I saw them. Thank you. All right, do I have a motion to move number three farther down? Because the attorney will not be available until after seven.
Seven.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same? Okay, discussion and possible action regarding right turn, no stop at Brewery Road and Finest Street. Laura, you want to just give a quick briefing? It came out of your committee, I believe, right?
Yeah, um, so there were some issues with, people just are not stopping there. It sounds like it's a big, um, people are going through stop signs on both ways, if you're familiar with that.
Yeah, it's a T-intersection. That's something we have to fix.
Yeah, so they're thinking it's better to have a stop than a right turn, no stop. And, yeah.
All right, the only thing, it says in there that it's a four-way stop. It is not. It's a three-way stop. So it's a matter of removing the sign that currently says you can make right, right turn... So it's a matter of removing, uh, the sign that currently says you can make right, right turn, no stop.
Yeah.
All right.
So I'll make a motion that we, uh, remove the right turn, stop at Brewery Road and Finnis.
Right turn, no stop?
Right turn, no stop.
Second.
All right, any other discussion?
Comment, I think that, that, that may be the only situation like that in the whole village that I could think of.
Yeah, it's probably one of the early stages of like having a road where you don't have to stop, so you don't.
And I've been there like, oh, wait a minute, I don't have to stop. You know, after you come to a stop, oh, wait a minute, I didn't have to do that, did I?
One of your concerns from the safety committee, because I was just in the audience for that, was that there's, you know, so much development going on, and that was probably the edge of town at one point. Right, and now you have Waffenberg, and you've got a couple other developments that, you know, could possibly be going in past that, so just for traffic easement and for, um, no.
Right.
Make it like normal, make it like normal.
All right, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same? All right, number five, discussion regarding future village board meetings. There's two items on this, uh, on this one. The first one, it's a little, my, my, the reason I put it on was a little different than what the description was, but, so we have a little bit of options. Originally, I placed having more than one board meeting a month was because the meetings were becoming very long. So I thought I'd at least throw it out there, if people wanna break it down to two board meetings a month, it clearly should be, um, shorter. So, but again, I, I don't have strong feelings, I'll go either way. I just wanted to give the opportunity, if these five, five-hour meetings were getting too long, that you would want, or you're willing to just make it once a month and, and, uh, go the long meeting. So I guess I throw it out there, this is discussion only, I guess. So, I have Sarah, Kevin.
I prefer to keep once a month.
Okay. Kevin?
That was great. We do two, we do, we do two a month when it comes to budget season. And I think it, um, I support two a month if it's as needed, uh, and not the standard, the default. Uh, I think there are other ways to quicken the, the board meetings that we can investigate as well, and I think we should look at those options, too.
Okay. Bill?
So I'm, I'm in, I'm in agreement with, 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 uh, Kevin, is I'd like to keep this at one. We already have the method, uh, and, and resources that if we need to have a second or a third, you know, we can, we can call one, right? And then, and have a meeting as needed, like for this thing with the, with the, uh, change of ownership, you know? Right, so, um, I think it's anomalous that we have a five-hour meeting, get, because those don't happen very often, but they do on rare occasion.
Uh, the only thing I will say is, uh, I thought it was difficult to get the second meeting scheduled during the budget process, so I probably will in October, November automatically schedule two of them. Because we really struggle to be, to find time where everybody can be there, so, I agree. So I, I, I'm fine with one a month, but when we get to budget time, we'll probably kick in two.
Just plan for it.
Yeah.
You know what we should do, we should actually have, you know, come budget time, just in our calendar, already plan on that beginning of the year rather than.
No, I agree, I'm gonna probably sit down with Bill and we'll figure it out, yep.
Because we'll have to look around the other committees and like Plan Commission and all of that.
All right, and then, uh, the other one is, it was mentioned, uh, tonight that the, our regular board meeting in March falls during the week of spring break for Middleton, Cross Plains School District. I just wanna make sure we have a forum on that meeting. I don't wanna hit everybody here and then not have a forum. So is anybody gonna not be here that week?
That's the twenty-third of March?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm here.
I, I think it matters when the community can be here, because that's the day that we'll be voting on things, and I think that being spring break, it affects a lot of people in the village.
I know, but then how do you justify, if you move it to the next week, there's people who really want it to be at, at it because they're planning to, to something else. I think we have to be very, very careful that we stay consistent within the board here, because I'm guessing, no matter what date we find, there's probably people in the community that wanted to speak that won't be able to because of that, they're out of town or something, so.
So, but aren't there five Mondays in March?
Yeah.
And don't we, we can't really agree that a large proportion of residents are impacted by the school district?
I, I, I cannot tell you how many people are on, leaving town for spring break.
No, but impacted by the school district, have either work in the schools or have kids in the schools.
Yeah.
Wouldn't it be fair to say that probably at least half of the population is impacted by that?
I don't know, half, but, okay, but go on, let's say there is.
Right, so I think that, given what's on the agenda for that month, I think it's important that we think about the constituent before you move the meeting.
Uh, I would say we haven't made an agenda for that month. We, there's the assumption that it may be on there, but we're talking into UTVs, right?
I'd say exactly.
We haven't confirmed the agenda, there's no reason we must have it on that, that date. So, uh, we moved it back to April. We'd also have a new board member in place that could vote on something, that, that person will be, people will be.
Just move the agenda item?
I just say do the agenda, keep the meeting the same, and just move the big agenda item off of that meeting.
All right.
I think that would we move Christmas, are we gonna change things around?
We do.
We do.
Difference.
Well, only if it's a holiday, we don't do it for Christmas break.
No, we do it for Christmas, we do, because typically, Christmas week.
Yeah, last year would have been Christmas Eve, so, yeah.
But if there's no school, we still have meetings. I mean, like Mondays, like if there would be President's Day and there'd be no school, or something like that, we'd still have a meeting normally.
Of course.
I mean, we don't ever change it just because there's no school. That I know, at least not that I know of.
Question, then, what would, what would be the harm in moving it to the thirtieth? You know, what, what happens if we do that? I think, you think people are already locked in on their calendars as far as being here for the twenty-third?
I, I, I am suspecting that I will get emails, yes. I believe, I will get emails on why'd you move it, you're catering to one group versus the other. I can't tell you what everybody's schedule is, okay? I think everybody's expecting it to be at the March meeting. Um, I think it opens up a lot of can of worms if we're moving it, um, just to move it for that issue. I don't know if we would, I'm trying to think of other cases where we would move, uh, an item just to move the item.
We haven't developed.
No, no, I agree, I agree.
We haven't moved anything yet, that's what I'm saying.
But if you're, see, that's, but that's my worry, if people leave here with what you're talking about, is that we moved, that we have it in April, that means it can't be in March. Because I'm guessing if we agreed to that, you guys are thinking that all of a sudden, if Bill and I put it on March, that we won against what you thought was gonna happen.
I just think we should do the right thing.
Well, Sarah, that's my whole point, I don't.
What is?
Yeah.
It's making it available to as many community members that want to attend. And we know that a large fraction of the community members are likely impacted by the school district schedule.
But when you say impacted, that just means the kids are at home, you don't know that they're all leaving town. Do you think after?
No, I don't, but that's why I think the right thing to do is to accommodate it. Because we don't know, we're not gonna survey every resident, are we?
No, but what do you, how's, what's your response to?
Well, I thought Kevin's idea was all right.
Okay, but let me ask you, if we do that, and then someone gives me an email saying, you know, everybody was planning on March, now you have it in April, now I can't make the April meeting, because I'm.
So how have you been responding to all the other emails? We're getting a lot of emails.
I'm getting a ton of emails, I'm not responding, because they're not asking questions like that. But that's, because right now, I'm collecting information. What I do with the emails is I collect them all, and if they have facts in there, I do fact checking. That's what I'm doing, I'm basically doing fact checking and coming up with a whole list of pros and cons to it. So that's what I'm doing.
I would suggest you respond by saying that we wanna make this available to everyone in the community. That's, you asked then, and that's my answer, that's what I think you would say.
I know, but I, I'm not sure I can actually deliver that. That's my problem, I don't know if I can deliver that. That's, well, do you think you could? You think, you think if we move it to April, we've delivered it to everybody?
Deliver what?
Well, the ability to come to the meeting. You're saying that the reason you wanna move it to April is so more people can make the meeting?
Right.
So the question is, do you think a hundred percent of the people can make the April meeting?
No, I don't think a hundred percent of people can make any meeting.
So then?
But I'm saying a large fraction of the constituents are likely impacted by the school district schedule, and are impacted, every resident is impacted by the UTV ATV decision.
I would agree with that.
So.
All right, someone else here, I wanna hear.
What about the March thirtieth? Why, why have we just leaked over from March twenty-third to something in April? Why can't we do it on the thirtieth of March? That's one week later, that's a date that seems like it.
We have, we, we have done that in the past.
We have?
So, I think three or four years ago, we moved a meeting. It was, I think it was because there wasn't a forum.
Yeah.
Right, right.
That, that was the reason I brought it up, right.
Right, if we couldn't make it, you're right, then we'd have to change it, like for budget, when people can't make it. But if we can all make it, we've never, not in twelve years have I ever.
No, you're exactly right.
But we've made it like, like, right, if five of us were gone, because of budget time, then we'd change the date, but not. We've never done it because there is no school, never, that I know of, in twelve years, that we ever not had a meeting because there was no school that day.
No, I agree with that, but we have, we have moved it because we did, because we have had a forum.
Because we couldn't make it.
Yeah, and that's why, that was the reason it was brought up tonight.
Right.
To see if we had a forum for the March meeting.
Right.
That was the only reason.
So we should find out who can make it to that meeting?
Well, everybody can, that's what it sounds like.
I will be coming in out of, from out of town that morning, so, oh, it's possible I might not, if something gets, gets screwed up with my plane flight, I might, might, might not make it, but basically, I, I expect to be here. Anyhow, I'll give you that one.
Well, I wanna hear from everybody else, I.
I'll, I'll be here.
No, 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 on if we should move the meeting.
I think, I mean, to Sarah's point, I think it's not just the people that are for, or, I mean, everybody who's either for or against this thing. And we could possibly be gone on spring break. I mean, that's just my, I agree with Sarah on that. This is just a huge, this is the biggest issue we've had since I've been on village board ever. But, but, do I have, but, am I gonna have an issue if we have, if we continue on the twenty-fourth? No, I'm all, does, I mean, I think Sarah has a, has a point. But.
I'm just gonna go around the table, I, I need to hear from everybody. Laurie, your feeling on it?
Um, I think it is a big issue, but I also think that, um, should we accommodate people, if people accommodate us? I mean, I can go either way with it, but I think, once we start doing that, it's going to become, well, you did it then, you need to do it for this, you need to do it for that.
Sarah, you wanna add anything else?
No.
Okay, Kevin?
Um, see, I feel it, and I mentioned it in passing, I hadn't thought about it, but, two things. One is, there's an election in April. There'll be, uh, new board members, I guess we have them, at least one new board member, um, at that time. And having that new board member vote on it intrigues me on that big issue. And then secondly, pushing it back, I feel no compulsion to rush it, for sure. And pushing it back a month doesn't seem like a, a big deal, and especially for an agenda that we haven't even made yet. I keep going back, pushing it back, the only thing we've done is we've, uh, somebody earlier today asked about the date, and we didn't promise anything, because we didn't know what the date was gonna be, at least that's what I tell. So, putting it on a April agenda doesn't seem like it's any different than putting it on a March agenda.
Lee?
Well, I can go either, I would say either the twenty-third or the thirtieth, but, uh, not, you know, I mean, we, everybody's waiting with bated breath to deal with this issue, I think we need to do it not postponed to April, so. Whether some, one day in, one of those two days in March would be work for you.
Judy?
I think we're setting precedents if we do it. Because I'm afraid, then again, if it is a big thing, or who knows what the next big issue is? And then if they can't make it that time, they're gonna say, well, you did it for this group, and you didn't do it for that group. I think we're opening up a whole can of worms if we do do it, because we could, they could come back to bite us if we do it. So I say we could leave it on the thirtieth.
All right, I'm gonna ask one more question, but do you think there's gonna be any new information brought on this topic from that month period from March to April? Or do you think we have received all the information that there possibly is out there?
I can't answer that.
Yeah?
I read sixty-three emails last night.
I, I'm proud of that. That, that's exactly, and that's kind of my, I'm concerned about the precedence that we're setting. I'm concerned that some people are going to say we're playing favorites. You know, thirty, I, I, I'm more, if we move it, I'm more with Lee, you know? This has divided the community for a long time. We started this in June, we are now going into April. I mean, how much longer do we wanna prolong this? And I, I am concerned that there's gonna be a very, somebody who really is planning on being at one when we move it will not be there, and then I'm trying to come up with a justification on how I can say to that person, well, we moved it because of this, and I'm sorry that happened to you. That's, I, I'm gonna be honest with you, that's where I'm at with this. Uh, I, I, I don't have to say that, this is a scheduled meeting, it is what it is. My responsibility is to make sure we have a forum, we have that. But like I say, I, I'm really torn on this, and I'll, I'm trying to get a flavor from everybody, so.
So I, I, you know, I, I think you're right, um, I think Judy's right, as far as this was set of precedents for this particular issue, and like you said, you don't know what the next issue's gonna be. There is, there are a lot of people on both sides, whether they can be here or not, that will, that will be here, regardless of the date, whether we have it on the twenty-third, we have it on the thirtieth, we have it in April. There's gonna be a lot of people at that venue, that that's here. So, you know, are we in a rush? No, is, you know, uh, that's all I'm gonna say on it. I, 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 I mean, I would be fine keeping it on the twenty-third, just so we don't set up precedents for things in the future.
I gotta push back, I, I don't really, not really that strong about going to April, but I gotta push back on this precedent thing. It's not in the last minute, it's not in the resolution about, we must bring it to March. There was some discussion in, in general in that meeting about March meeting, or, once today before the meeting. There's no reason that we are required to bring it in March.
I was just talking about the meeting, I wasn't talking about the issue.
I'm sorry. Oh, wait, the meeting?
Just the meeting.
Oh, well, okay, so me, I can't make the thirtieth, so, but I don't care what you do on the thirtieth, change it, but the twenty-third, I'm strong about keeping the meeting, I thought you were talking about the issue.
No, 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 I'm just talking about the meeting, because that's the question.
I see, my, my apologies, I misunderstood. Keeping the twenty-third is fine, as far as I'm concerned.
Do we need a motion?
No, 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 because it's, it's a regular meeting, I just, I officially brought it up just to see the forum, but I knew that this was gonna be an issue, because I'm receiving some of the emails on both sides, so. All right, so we'll keep the, the meeting on the twenty- 23rd. And we're going to schedule double meetings during the budget process. And I'm looking to go back to the second and fourth Mondays. That should not be in conflict with anybody.
Right.
And we will get those dates out to you as soon as possible. All right?
Okay.
All right.
I didn't see, did the attorney come in?
Yeah, he's not back.
Oh, perfect. So, um, why don't we take, uh, number three then, which is the discussion of possible action to request a multi-jurisdictional transfer of Brewery Road from the town of Berry. Paul, you want to come up here, please?
Is there, is there anything in the package regarding this, this topic itself?
Um, there was a summary.
There was a summary, and then, and then I hinted out exhibit section.
It's very good.
Or something, I know.
Good evening. Thank you for coming. Thank you for waiting.
You want me to start us off?
Yeah, why don't you start us off, and...
So this item was on the most recent agenda, and it was tabled to this meeting. Um, the question that we have at hand here is whether or not we want to help the developer by asking for the multi-jurisdictional transfer of Brewery Road, the sections that are in the township. So if you look at your map, there's, there's a map of the complete road. This one here. The circle is pointed north. And everything that's in the hash marking, diagonal marking, that is the sections, those are the sections of the road that are in the township.
No.
So when we first started all of this, uh, our position was that the developer needed to bring in Brewery Road as part of this development because we foresaw that if we had a development up there, that there are issues with maintenance, um, on the road, that we wanted to be in control of that. And so if we received complaints, we could address it. We are receiving complaints now in regards to Brewery Road, or have had in the past in regards to, um, for example, maintenance, example, zoning fences, right-of-ways. And so I think that we can clean that up if we have the jurisdiction of Brewery Road. Developer went out and, and talked to property owners. I believe at this point, is not able to bring in all the right-of-way that is necessary. He's come back to the village to ask for assistance in trying to figure this out. And, and reviewing this, um, this jurisdictional transfer was an option for us. And so I know that Jay, you have a question in regards to the creation of town islands and whether or not, um, this jurisdictional transfer met, uh, that agreement criteria. And we have Paul here, the village attorney, to help answer that question, as he was not here last time. And then we also have Keo and Ron from the development team to talk about, um, the construction of the road and where it lays for the right-of-way.
Right. And then the second part of my concern is if we take that, do we take on the responsibility of if they run into a septic tank, are we responsible for moving it since now it's our road? And we're taking responsibility for it. So, uh, those are the two main issues I have.
Right. So at this point, I, I want to maybe address the island question first, and we can have Paul address that, and then we can talk about, uh, objects in the road. And we can have Ron and Keo.
Okay.
Paul, your own.
You did a fine job. What would you like me to say?
Well, I'd like me to start. Okay, statute states you can't form an island. Let's, let's pretend the state's gonna enforce that to the nth degree. They aren't. I, I know they're not.
They aren't.
I know they're not, but I believe that we should follow state statute, okay? Call me crazy or whatever. So to get around that part of the state statute, they allow you, which is sub B, to come up with a agreement or a plan, I forgot what the wording is, on subsections?
It's a cooperative agreement.
Yes. So the question is, what we're doing, does that meet that standard? Then I don't care about the islands, because then we're not in violation of state statute.
Well, it, it, it depends on what you mean by what you're doing. Um, because I'm not sure, I'm not sure what you're doing yet.
Okay.
So here, now, now I can frame the question a little bit better for you. So if, if you choose, there are really, well, there are really three choices here, as far, as far as I can see. One is to, from, from the beginning of this project, the village has put the burden on the developer to bring in Brewery Road and don't come back until you do. That's where this has started. Um, that, with full knowledge, uh, that was gonna be a very difficult task for the developer to accomplish because, number one, uh, the developer had to acquire a few little strips of land from landowners in the town that he would have to basically purchase either an easement for or, uh, or a fee simple so that we could make the right-of-way big enough for it to be a village road, uh, village street. The developer doesn't really have the tools in his toolbox to do that, unlike the village and/or the town would have eminent domain power, uh, power to create right-of-way, stuff like that. So we all knew that that was gonna be a difficult task for the developer to do, but it's the developer's project. It's not the village's job to do that for the developer. And we have been, for probably about the last five years, have been saying, this is your baby, figure it out. Okay? So the developers had some ups and downs and, and, and difficulty getting this accomplished. So now we are looking at, can the village assist? Does the village want to assist? Um, those are two questions that are the same, but are different, actually. Can the village assist is clearly yes. Uh, does the village want to assist is a different question, and now that tips into where, what we're gonna talk about now. Um, if the village brings in, if the village maintains the requirement that the entirety of the now existing Brewery Road be brought in as part of this project, uh, it is, there's no question that it will be creating a town island in that there is, to believe, four. There are four parcels, maybe only three, depending on how that one is situated. But there are three parcels that will be in the town, completely surrounded by the village. That's what Jay is referring to with the town island idea. That is creating a town island, no doubt about it. There is a very specific statute that says you can't do that. Um, there is a very specific statute that says you can't do that. However, the Department of Administration will tell you every day of the week that they aren't going to enforce that. The only person that, the only entity that can enforce that would be the town of Berry. That is where the property currently is located, and that is where the island would be. The landowners aren't being affected because nothing is changing for them. They're still in the town. They still have exactly the same rights they had at the beginning of this conversation. So they don't have any standing to complain. Um, the town can, and the only, and the only issue there is, will the annexation then be, be legal if it's challenged? So to get around that, uh, the statute says that you can create a, basically, it's the equivalent of a boundary agreement with the town of Berry that says, here's what's going to happen. Okay? So this, this goes to, okay, I'm not sure what you guys are planning to do with this boundary agreement, but the boundary agreement, you know, normally when you think boundary agreements, you think big expansive documents with the, between the town and the village that says the village is not going to expand in this direction. The village is only gonna go this way. The town is gonna be okay with that. As long as you don't go over here, we won't object to you going over here, that kind of arrangement. But at the same time, a boundary agreement can be as simple as, there are three lots or four lots right here. The town and the village acknowledge that a town island is being created. The village is going to do nothing to force the town, these residents, to do anything. The town's not going to object to the annexation. This is the agreement. Thank you very much. We're done. It can be that simple. Now, whether it will be that simple is a totally different question because nobody's approached the town yet with any of these issues, I don't think. Uh, at least not formally. And so the agreement really doesn't need to be a big expansive document, but what it needs to be is something that says, we all acknowledge, here's what's going on, and these are the rules that we're gonna play by for these parcels that are being created as the town island. At the same time, we have the Brewery Road issue to deal with. So most likely, if you're gonna make this kind of agreement, you're gonna lump these two issues together. Um, and that's where the more tricky part will come in. So, yes, if you're going to require annexation of the entire Brewery Road into the village, then we're gonna be creating a town island. Then we're gonna need to have some kind of a bound, a coa, I'm gonna call it a cooperative agreement with the town of Berry. Your other option is to forget about bringing the road, or bringing those pieces into the village. Leave Brewery Road exactly like it is. Leave it in the town. Those parts that are in the town, leave in the town. Those parts that are in the village, leave in the village. And simply request the town of Berry to give up its jurisdiction to its part of Brewery Road. Uh, my guess is that they would be more than happy to do that. The downside of that is the village is now responsible for that road. Um, that road's a mess. It's in bad shape. It's varying widths. It's, it's a mess. It's going to need some significant help if it's going to be used as a residential street. I think everybody understands and acknowledges that as well. So to deal with that particular issue, that then becomes an issue between the village and the developer. It's like, okay, this is now a village, this is now gonna be a village responsibility. Developer, we just picked that up for you. You're fixing this up. That, that would be part of the development agreement that would then say, here's how this is going to work. Uh, we just inherited this street. That's a piece of crap. You need to make this street really nice for your residents that are gonna be living up here, so this is what you're going to do as part of our agreement to get this project off the ground. So that's one way of looking at that issue. The boundary agreement, running out of air here. The boundary agreement could then include, if you choose to do this, could then include some language, if the town would be willing, that they might be able to pick up some of the right-of-way strips, that we need to make the street uniform length all the way up to the top. Um, that could also be part of the boundary agreement that you're doing. The town has the authority to, uh, obtain right-of-way, and we're not talking like 100-foot wide strips here. We're talking a few feet here and a few feet here from some landowners toward the top of the, toward the top of the street. Um, if the town did that, obviously, they're gonna want to be compensated for whatever expense they have in that. That's something that the village would then be responsible for. That's something that the village would then get back from the developer at some point in time. There.
Well, there's one more, I used that question.
Yes.
On both of those options that you talked about, if we're constructing the road and we run into a septic, let's say that has to be moved, at whose expense does that fall to? Now that you are...
Your comment before, well, no, let me, let me do it this way. Um, if the village takes jurisdiction of the entirety of Brewery, of Brewery Road, the village will be accepting that street as is. However it is, is what it is. Um, there won't be any representations from anybody as to what lies underneath the street. There won't be any representations of anything. The village will then be responsible for dealing with this, whatever it is that you find. And the village, I would imagine, would be more than eager to pass all of that back on to, on to the developer as something that they're gonna have to pay for. I mean, that's, that's how this is going to have to work if that becomes the issue. The developer so far, um, has been good about covering the village cost. We have not even put one word on paper yet as far as the development agreement as to how this is all going to, we haven't even got close to that far yet. So, but those would all be, those would all be costs that I would certainly be recommending that the village charge back to the developer because had, had it not been for their development, we wouldn't be having any of these conversations right now. So that, and that's a normal thing. I mean, there's nothing, uh, outside the box on that at all.
Anybody else?
Okay, I understand, right. We take jurisdiction, what this resolution says is we take jurisdiction of the road as, as is, where is, which is a mess, okay? And we have to live with what it is. But at the same time, we can say then to the developer, in order to get this thing annexed and all that stuff done, you fix the road. If I, I understand, that would be the, I mean, we take jurisdiction the way it is now, but we wouldn't necessarily do anything. We would rather have the developer do the road building, just like we do with a, a new, a brand-new development. Say you need to do the road. Am I, am I hearing this right?
Dylan, and Paul, you want to answer?
Yeah, we wouldn't, we wouldn't, I mean, we wouldn't even accept the transfer of the road unless we had that agreement ahead of time. So developer's gonna have to agree to pay for all the repairs and stuff in that road before the year goes by for the transfer.
I, I agree, and I agree. Uh, the issue is gonna be one of timing. Because Brewery Road is a mess right now. The village takes that road over, it may be one, two, three. I don't know how long it'll be before the development actually starts. So in that period of time, you've got a, you've got a window where will the village feel the need to have to do something before the developer is ready to do something? I, I don't know the answer to that question, but that's an issue.
Is that window?
Yeah, I, and I don't know how long that window is because that, the village doesn't have control over the developer's timeline.
Right. But taking just the jurisdiction of the road, does it be, that means that it's still considered town, so it's not creating the island? Or, that's how you're getting around it that way, right?
Right, yep.
We're basically telling, yeah, transferring that, but yet it's still take, it's town.
You're transferring the jurisdiction of the road, you're leaving it in the town.
As it exists.
Yes.
Or even when we fix it.
And when you fix it, it'll still be physically located in the town of Berry.
Yes.
That, that is true.
And that would probably be the only road we'd have that we would be maintaining that's not in the village. And the only way to get it in the village properly would be to do that, uh, boundary agreement.
Yes, well, if you, if you annex, if you annex all of that, yes, now it's a village street. It's in the village. Now you're creating the island. So...
Can you, um, just dumb it down for me a little bit and tell me what is the reason that the developer has not been able to prepare the road without the village?
Well, I will speak to what I know, um, which is not the entire story. But what I know is that the developer, I think if I remember right, there are five strips. There are five landowners that have to each give up a few feet of their, I guess, well, a few feet of their yard, basically, to create enough right-of-way to make it an official village street. Um, those individuals most likely want to, if they're interested at all in giving up their, their land, they want to sell it. And so therefore, it has to be purchased. And the developer does not have the right, as like the village would have, uh, to basi- does not have the right, as like the village would have, to basically come in and say, we're taking this. We don't care if you want to give it to us or not. We're taking it, using the eminent domain authority that the village has or that the town has. The developer doesn't have that right. So, he literally has to pay for it, and that's what I know.
So, has developer asked the landowners and they've said no?
I do not know anything about those negotiations.
We have the developer there.
I just want to step back, and Paul can correct me, or Paul or Bill can correct me if I'm wrong, but there's kind of two separate issues here. One is those little strips of land in the right-of-way. And just to clarify, this isn't land that's, this isn't part of the, they're privately owned land. These are strips that already exist in the road right-of-way, so the residents don't have the right to do anything with that land. It's just that sometimes the land is dedicated, has been dedicated to the town or the village, and sometimes it hasn't. It's just kind of a title work cleanup issue. So, that's one issue that needs to be resolved one way or another. But it's separate from what I see as the bigger issue, which is annexation or not annexation of Brewery Road. That, so far, in our development agreement with the village, the village has assumed that the entire road would be annexed. The only way to do that is to create a town island. If the village is not, does not want to create a town island, that's a decision that the village makes and says, no, we don't want, we can create a town island, but we don't want to create a town island. Then, we should change that part of the development agreement to say Brewery Road is not going, all of Brewery Road is not going to get annexed. You can annex some of it. You have to leave a strip free to prevent the creation of a town island. To me, that's the, that's the bigger issue. Then, how we deal with the strips that are in the right-of-way is kind of, is a more technical issue, but Paul was correct. Essentially, when I go as a developer to the residents and say, hey, I would like your strip of land that you, that's already in the right-of-way that you can't do anything with, but deed it over to the village, then they look at me and scratch their heads and say, if the village, if this is going to the village, then why isn't the village asking for this? Why are you asking for this? So, that may be secondary issue of those strips. To me, it should be dealt with either by the town or by the village because those are the two municipalities that have, have power over the right-of-way. I'd never do anything with the right-of-way other than pay to improve it if it, for the purpose of the development. So, they're two separate issues. The strips have to be dealt with either way, but to me, the bigger question that's really before you is, are you going to create a town island or not? What I heard at the last meeting was, the answer was no. So, if that's the case, then Brewery Road should not be annexed in its entirety like the development agreement says, and there should be some sort of agreement with the town to not create a town island.
He's talking about the pre-annexation.
Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I guess I'm just going to disagree. The other thing is, we can do a town island. We just do it how it's required by state statute. So, you can still do it. I mean, it's not an all or nothing.
Okay, okay, I'm sorry. This, this third option that Paul brings up, I apologize. Yeah, that I didn't know about, but, and I guess that, that would still require a change in the, I mean, a minor change in the pre-annexation agreement because I guess it does not involve the annexation, Paul. Is that correct?
It would require the, yeah, well, it would require a change in our pre-annexation agreement. That is correct, depending on what it is that we end up deciding to do. If, if we pursue the, Sarah, did your question get answered good enough?
Yeah.
Temporarily, anyway. If we decide to, if you decide to go down the town island route, I believe that's going to require us, the village, to sit down with the town and most likely have the developer be involved in that as well and put together kind of a three-way agreement because, as to exactly what's going to happen with all of this and how extensive and how detailed are you going to be. Because the village can sit down with the town and spend the developer's money all day long, and that'd be perfectly fine. But I have a feeling the developer will at least want to be at the table when all this is going on.
And just to add to that, in the grand scheme of things, I don't think any of those three options change what we were expecting, which is that because the road's being primarily, I mean, in the short term, in the next 10 years, it's only being improved for the purpose of the development that we're proposing. We expected to pay for the improvement of the road, and we expected to pay for any other, you know, septic system that's in the way or something like that. The village isn't going to pay for it, and the residents shouldn't pay for it. So, I think it's always, regardless of those three options, we're paying for the improvement of that road.
All right.
What happens then if the development doesn't go, you don't develop for four, three, however many years, and then the village has to pay for this road to be fixed?
I don't know, I mean, I don't know about the legal issues, but the only reason to fix the road is because you're going to have more traffic going down it. If it stays the way it is, then, because there are no new residents there, I don't see, I mean, it shouldn't be a problem, but maybe legally, it's a different issue. I don't know.
Okay, I'm one of these four or five residents that do not want to be annexed. You take a look at my survey, certified survey map, my neighbors, it shows that there was or there is a road right-of-way. And after those two lots, my lot and the neighbor's, the roadway is not existing. If you take a look at the neighbors out of that area, there is at least one water well and one septic system that is close to the road. I mean, they're, they're going to be impacted along with the driveway for one of the residences. My septic field or my septic is probably five years old now, and that was put in with the road right-of-way planned for, even though I lose my trees. Now, your lawyer said there's not going to be any difference for these lots, you know, for these four lots. Well, there's going to be differences because I'm going to give up my township rights, you know, over a brain barrel and, you know, teaching my kids how to shoot and, oh, no.
No, you still fall under the town. Your property...
Well, the thing is, not if you guys don't create us or leave us out of the island.
No, 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 you're missing the understanding. If we don't do an island, what we do is we keep brewery still in the Town of Berry. So, it goes up and hits the Town of Berry, so you're not in the island. It doesn't affect your lot in any way. The way originally that we said is, we want a brewery all in the village, which means now we're surrounding your property.
Right.
You're still in the Town of Berry.
But I caught the undertone that you don't want an island.
Technically, yeah, you can't have an island, which means you are surrounded by the village, but yet you're still in the town. Those four parcels that are going to be the island aren't losing any of their rights at all. No, none.
These are when you go up the road on the left?
Uh, yes. Well, not, it's really at the bottom of the hill.
At the bottom?
Yeah, from basically the farm to the village line, so that from the crick on up.
Okay.
Well, not the crick, I don't know.
Well, one...
Yeah, that's a better one, yeah. Lougham River Boulevard is the one I would write.
Kevin? Paul, could you just, we've jumped around a little bit. I need just a refresher. Could you please summarize the three options in like four words or less?
I was just trying to write them down, but I think I've forgotten what they are.
I'm glad I'm not the only one.
Well, okay. All right, everybody take notes. I'll do this as best as I can. One is continue the current agreement, which is to require the developer to take care of this and keep the village out of it. That's choice number one. That's where you are as you sit here right now. Choice number two is create the town island and enter into a, some kind, some kind of an agreement with the Town of Berry that basically says, acknowledges that this island is being created and acknowledges, here's how we're going to handle this in the future. And as a subset of that issue is, do we want to ask the town for assistance in helping with these right-of-way issues that we have here? So, that is option two. And option three is, don't, basically do a 180 from bringing the brewery road into the village and just leave it as it is and have the town cede its jurisdiction of the town parts over to the village.
Say that last part again.
Basically, ask the town to give up its rights to Brewery Road, and then the village will accept the responsibility.
Well, no, basically, that's the option where it's a village street, but it's in the Town of Berry.
So, we plow it, we...
Yeah, we take full responsibility of everything with it, but it sits in the town.
You plow it, you patch it.
Yeah, it sits in the town.
You fix it with trees.
Which is the presentation that we've seen, this is what's in here right now in the proposal, right?
That's what I asked you for permission to do, is to go talk to the town about...
Who's that you're asking for?
What I read was it, take jurisdiction. That's what we were talking about doing.
Right now, staff's asking for the third option.
And that way, you don't create a town island.
I guess my feeling on this, and I'm going to throw, if we're going to go to the Town of Berry, why not just get the boundaries all set up and clear all that up at once? I, you know, I'm, because we can do this what they want, but you still have the right-of-way problems to deal with. Unless I'm missing that?
Yeah, part of it goes into strategy in that when you enter into negotiation with a boundary agreement, there's an opportunity to pull in other items in regards to municipal boundaries.
Yeah.
Whereas the jurisdictional transfer, we're talking only specifically about Brewery Road in that the maintenance issues, we feel, continued maintenance issues is a big enough burden on them that they would favor relieving themselves of that burden.
So, if you even clear it, is staff has a position that all the right-of-way along Brewery Road would need to be annexed and fall under the jurisdiction of the village? That's what's in here.
That's, that's what's in the pre-annexation agreement.
Right, but we would be changing that. Sarah?
Historically, the village has a stance, like, go ahead to the developer, you know, you're on your own, get this figured out on your own, then come back to us, correct?
Mm-hmm.
So, can you give some more background as to why that was the board's stance?
Well, I don't...
I mean, because why are we changing, why are we proposing to change what was part of the original plan to me, if that's what the board...
Because they can't get it.
I understand that, but the board felt strongly enough about it at the time, knowing that this was going to be difficult to achieve, right, Paul?
Well, I, yes and, yes and no. I mean, we knew that it was going to be difficult to achieve, but, well, yes, I'll just say yes. That's, that's a true statement. And I guess now, well, I hesitate to put words in other people's mouths, but I'm going to do it anyway right now. I think it's the, it's the general opinion of staff that it's becoming time to try to move this development along because the village needs the lots, which has kind of changed the staff way of thinking about this project, okay? Staff doesn't make the final call, you do. But I think that's kind of the reason for this conversation.
Well, I want to, I want to quick that. Not necessarily that the village needs the lots, but because the preliminary plot has been approved on this subdivision, the clock has started.
Oh, thank you. Yes, I forgot about that part. That's true.
So, within, so there's approximately 36 months for which they need, the village needs to consider a final plot on this or to all reverse. And so, there is an ongoing clock, and in addition to that, we have a pre-annexation agreement that's been renewed a number of times. And so, we, staff, would like some direction on this, and we see because town island was a big concern, we see this jurisdictional transfer as a way forward. Obviously, it's up to the board to make that decision, whether or not you would like to go in that direction. If we stick with the status quo, developer is, then would have to continue to work on that issue. But we are currently at a standstill here.
Can I just add one thing about that, because I've been around for the history of this? I don't think that it was ever the board that, the board never pushed one way or another, I think, for the annexation and the town island. I think it was just that that can was kicked down the road, and the issue was going to come up. And now, we've progressed far enough in the development and the preliminary plat that that issue is here, and I think we heard clearly that once that issue came before the board, that there was not a desire to just annex the road and be damned, and the state statute be damned. So, I don't see kicking the can down the road further as a viable option because I think that issue has to be tackled. What is the status of that road going to be? If our pre-annexation agreement isn't accurately reflecting what the village wants, and I really don't think it is, then we should change that. Kevin? On all these decisions, I guess I'm wondering what's the long play? What's, you know, what's five, 10, or 20 years from now? Does jurisdictional, what do we call it? Jurisdictional authority disagreement, will that play better for the village in the long run, or will the idea of a town island play better for the village in the long? Do either of them give us more opportunity in the future to essentially eliminate the island?
Nope.
Neither way.
Not in my, not in my opinion. I mean, the island, the island is there.
Yeah.
It's, it's four parcels that may be owned by four different people or fewer people, but the, the village doesn't ever have the authority to force
Right.
those parcels into the village.
Where I'm going with this is, let's say, landowner number four down that road wants to annex, but yet they're not connected to village property. They're, they're creating a village island then in the middle. If the one that's not, well, maybe it would be an island on the back of a lot. I guess I'm not looking at the back.
All, all four of those parcels, if Kiel's developer is annexed into the village, all four of those parcels will be able to annex independently because they're all contiguous to village land already.
On the back side, on the west side?
Correct.
Okay.
Lee?
Okay, well, as I'm hashing this out, it looks to, it sounds to me like going the full annexation and town island route is, is a one-stop shop to get the whole thing done, knowing that it's an issue that we can work around. We just do the road. We still got to deal with the other stuff. If we do the, do the plan that gets us to a, gets us to full annexation of the road, including it, and making town islands then, making each town island then, then we, this is something that can be done, and it's, it's a one action that can cover the whole thing. I think that's, and that's what I, that's where I think I'd be in favor of.
And I guess just to go on top of Lee, I, I don't think we should be afraid to work with our neighboring governments, you know? I mean, I, you know, I'm hearing it almost sounds like, well, we don't want... You know, I mean, I, you know, I'm hearing it almost sounds like, well, we don't want to go this route because we gotta deal more with the Town of Berry, you open the door, then they're gonna want to maybe trade this or trade that. It may be a good thing for us. I, I don't know. I guess my whole point is, why we wouldn't try to do that first, because it certainly clears up a lot of issues.
Do which first?
Do, do the one where we set up, I thought, that's what you were talking about, the option where we do an actual order change and yes, we legally create the islands, but the whole road and everything is now in the village.
Yeah.
I think it's number two option.
Option two.
Oh, is that number two? Oh, got it. Yes. Okay, well. It's actually, it's actually that, what, what Lee and Jay are talking about would be a combination of two and three.
Oh.
Because you would be, if, if successful, you would be tackling both those issues at the same time.
That's what, when you said tackling both, I thought that's what you were referring to.
Yeah, right.
And I understand Staff that it's.
You have to deal with the town, but.
Right. But on this one here, I, I understand where the Staff wants to go with that. It's clearly probably gonna be quicker and maybe a little bit easier because you can certainly make a great argument, why wouldn't the town give it to us? If they get the land and we do all the improvements and maintain it all, their residents, you know, are gaining a great benefit from it. So I, I, I understand that, and I don't want to downplay it. But I just think if we're gonna do it, I think we should try to do it right and I think we should really start reaching out to the towns and start working with them because I think a lot of the issues we're dealing with expand outside the village and, you know, I, I think it's a good, a good thing. You know, I think we've built a pretty good relationship with Dade County and, you know, the Executive's Office, I think we should continue to do that. You know, I just, to me, that's, and we're already doing it with North Hill Point Road, right? We're already working with the town.
Yep. And it'll, it'll be a similar, a similar project to that on a bigger scale. Yeah, it's, it's the same concept.
Prove that last.
Yeah, yeah, no, I know what you're talking about. It's just.
That one's very simple compared to this one we're working on.
Yeah.
So do we need to make a decision tonight, or can we, can we give guidance to Staff and say, you know, have that conversation with the Town of Berry and get their, you know, give them the options that we're thinking about, and then come back to the village next month and say, this is after our discussions with the Town of Berry, this is what, you know, we talked about and what is, I can go between both communities. Is that viable?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna refer that to Bill because it's.
Yeah, so, so, we like to open that conversation with them, whether it's, the boundary agreement or whether it's a jurisdictional transfer. We don't know what they're gonna say at this point, but we want the board's approval to have that discussion with them because right now, as it says, we're saying, and by the pre-annexation agreement, we're saying it needs to be annexed in total.
Yeah, we don't, we don't want to go down this road if you don't want us to go down this road.
I've been on about the boundary agreement, I mean, that's.
And that's the motion?
Well, no, 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 because really, I think we're coming up with some solutions down the road, but the question is, right now, we have all the responsibility put onto the developer. The question here is, do we agree that the village get involved in this and start working at the other two alternatives? Alternative one is, hey, this is yours, you have to do it, go to it, and if you can't do it, I'm sorry type thing. So really, what we're asking is, do we want to now put the village into this mix? And you've heard a couple of the options that they can talk about. Is that kind of the summary of it, right?
So what if I created a motion and said, I think we need, the motion would be to change the pre-ex agreement, but we need to have a conversation with the Town of Berry for order agreement rather than the jurisdiction agreement initially, and have the village get involved with the Brewery Road annexation.
I think you could simplify that.
Yes.
I probably could.
Our motion would be just simply that we can give Staff the ability to operate outside of the annexation agreement.
Yes.
That would be.
Open a conversation with the town.
Okay.
All right. So I would make a motion that we, that we give Staff permission to operate outside the pre-annexation agreement to discuss possibilities of Brewery Road with the Town of Berry.
Okay, you got it, you can say it.
Motion and second any other discussion.
Allow the bill to talk about it.
Yes.
Well done.
And then we're gonna get into that mix.
Oh, wait, so the motion is that we're gonna get into the mix?
No, no, no.
No, the motion is that we're gonna have that discussion, open that discussion.
You know, what we're basically doing is accepting the developer's request that, hey, we've gone as far as we can, we can't do anymore. So it's either, you know, it is what it is and we don't do it, or we just don't get Brewery Road in, you know what I mean? So what we're doing is opening it up, that the village is now gonna play a role in helping to negotiate that part of Brewery Road.
Whatever that is, we'll bring it back.
No, absolutely, because we can negotiate. Yeah, we gotta see what it is. All right, I'm gonna do a roll call vote on this.
Trustee Broussier?
Yes.
Trustee Standard?
Yes.
Trustee Francois?
No.
Trustee Thucius?
Yes.
Trustee Sorensen?
Yes.
Trustee Kettlebauer?
Yes.
President Langford?
We're both no.
That'd be your idea.
Well. Mostly Kerry's back too.
All right, thank you.
You need to drink a glass.
No, I don't, but I have.
All right, we're at the presentation.
I'll be calling you early.
Yeah.
Keep calling me, I'll take care of him right away tomorrow.
Hey, sixty.
Good night.
All right, again.
Good night.
Night.
We're gonna go to Hardpoint for, anyone wants to take a break? That's where it's, yeah.
I know, I need that too.
What did I do, Hardpoint on the presentation? Sorry.
I can't.
Sorry to call that for a problem. I'm not sure why you're thanking me for that, but.
I think everyone who's interested should run. I think it's a good thing.
I am interested, so I appreciate that.
Well.
You gonna be there on the tent?
Of course.
Cameron, I do have a sort of like transcript.
You know, I've got a couple of questions about that and I, you know, I haven't got a response, but I think I just.
I asked the library today and it told me no, so.
Oh, okay.
That doesn't mean that they know what to think.
Yeah, because I've had people ask if they're gonna report it.
Yeah.
You got questions? Well, there's four. Yeah, we're on that at a time, but then the rest are coming with the knowledge.
Right.
Okay.
Yes.
Well, this is real hard. That's a funny.
Okay.
I'll talk to Jeff. Yeah. I think this video works and ends up on YouTube or something. Yeah.
And I don't, I don't think that those.
Okay. Yes. Oh, do it. Okay, yeah.
I like that. And then you turn to a toothpaste.
Well, see, I.
Yeah.
Four days of permanent growth.
Oh, okay.
That's all.
Okay.
Okay. Okay. Okay. Okay. Okay. Okay. Okay. That's the most legitimate argument. Oh, it's all.
Okay.
I would agree.
Okay, that's quite, that was an issue.
Yeah. So I. Yeah. Yeah, I got it. I know it's only.
He called me and I'm like, what happened to this question?
It doesn't matter to me.
Yeah. He's like, well, look at his head and don't do it.
I'll tell you.
Yeah. I was.
See, that's not.
I don't like tonight, I don't like it at all. I'm not gonna do it. Okay. I don't like speaking to someone like you.
Oh, we ready to go? All right, let's do it.
I'm Bobby Zon, I'm the finance director here at the village, and I was asked to put together a broad kind of presentation about tax increment financing, kind of what it is, how it works, so here we go. First of all, there's two different acronyms that are similar that people get confused a little time. So TIF is Tax Increment Financing. It's identified or defined as an economic development technique available for municipalities to expand its property tax base where the development would not occur without public assistance. And this is where the what-for requirement comes in, when we approve projects, developers need to show us that their project couldn't happen without the help of the TIF, whether through incentives or infrastructure improvements. And then the TIF is actually Tax Increment District, and it's simply the contiguous geographical area in which the TIF financing can be used. How do you create a TIF? First, the municipality needs to create their project plan. The project plan should identify the TIF boundaries, list out some potential projects, and the estimated cost of those projects. The project plan can be amended as many times as desired during the expenditure period. However, you can only change the boundaries of the TIF four times. Next, the municipality would hold an initial joint review board meeting. Notifications need to be sent to all the other taxing jurisdictions such as the school and the county, and then to also any property owners within the TIF boundaries. And then we would hold a public hearing. The plan commission then would adopt a resolution. Once the project plan is approved, a municipal resolution is adopted, and then the joint review board adopts a resolution. And then finally, the Wisconsin Department of Revenue would review and certify the base assessment value of the TIF. Just a little bit about joint review board, what that is. Any new value that has an active TIF, they are required, required to maintain a standard joint review board for the entire time that the TIF exists. They are required to meet at least once a year. Generally, they just review the annual TIF report. And then our JRV has five members that represent all of our taxing jurisdictions. TIF termination. The TIF can be terminated in two main events. One is at the end of the TIF life that's in the project plan, or they can close early if the tax increment payments that we receive or that the TIF receives equal the project costs. So it can close early. I'd be a little hard read, but I did put together kind of a fake TIF example here. So the base value of our TIF is gonna be twenty-eight million. We're gonna print a cost of two-point-four, and it's a fifteen-year TIF, ten years where we can spend the money.
The project cost, that's the village cost or the develop, different developers?
The, it'd be money that the TIF would give out either to developers and incentives or improving roads or adding a road or.
It's based off the base, no, yeah, the base value is what the area value is. Then you decide, okay, we're gonna have this amount of money in the bank that we're going to give out to businesses or the municipality to do improvement.
And where does that money in the bank come from?
We borrow it. Oh.
We borrow it, okay, thanks.
Yeah, we borrow it.
Yeah, you borrow. Okay. So in our example, during year one, which is two thousand and five, we're gonna complete some projects and it causes a growth in value of two-point-five million, which is then the increment. The tax right here in two thousand and six then is fifteen dollars per thousand, so that times the increment is a thirty-seven thousand five hundred dollar payment that the TIF would collect.
Collect from, from the tax.
The taxi, the taxes, that would be their portion.
Okay. Can I just get any help a little bit?
Absolutely.
So we borrow this money and what makes the TIF useful is, we don't have to pay the money back through taxes. It's paid by keeping the value, so as the value of the property goes up, let's say there's a value, the property's a hundred thousand, but then it goes up to twenty thousand, that twenty thousand times the tax rate goes to pay for the loan. So it does, we don't pay for it.
Well, we, we need the tax figure.
Yeah, we just don't get that taxes anymore, but it goes to pay that, that, that loan.
We get the tax from the base value.
Yep, so as more projects are completed, the value of the TIF increases, and then each year, the ending assessment value minus the base value gives you the increment, which would be that. And then the increment value is multiplied times the tax rate to come up with the amount to be collected for use in the TIF. So let me add it all together here. And these increment funds then are used to pay the project cost. So, okay.
So, I mean, so the idea is to take a blithe area where we're not getting any tax revenue from and making it something sustainable within the village. That's why, that's why we have this out there. It's, I'll just leave it at that.
Well, we did, if you look at what we had, if you remember the butter factory, right? That one bankrupt, there was parts of that that wasn't paying any taxes. They were in arrears and everything, it was an ugly site. So by doing this, we were able to give developers enough money to help with that, now they put those apartment buildings in. So we're getting a lot more revenue than what we were getting from when it was the closed-down butter factory.
But you can't make some, a property owner in a TIF.
Oh, no.
Prove their property.
No, 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 they choose to do it.
Okay. And, because I, I had asked that you do this, because I got very confused when we talked about that we owed the TIF.
Well.
That part.
If you look early on, and she doesn't have it on there.
Yeah.
At some point, you have, you have to make payments, so early on, like, the very first year, you're not gonna have enough increase in value of taxes to pay that whole bill. So they usually run in the red for a while, and then they'll run to where they're in the black and they can start paying off where they, the years that they were in the red. And then when it's all done, like she said, once you pay it off, all of that money then comes into the tax base. So in the long run.
It's all built into this?
Yes.
And right now, it's about four years from us, right?
Well, I think twenty, thirty-one, when I looked at it, was when it would be a profit, I think.
That's the next.
Oh, you got that, okay.
No, I, I don't have specific numbers on our TIF as far as how it's doing. That'll be part of the MSA's presentation in a couple of months or.
We have one TIF or two?
We have one.
My, my big question is, we, I mean, you know, so we're gonna get a map of the TIF, you know, and we've done, you know, three major projects, three apartment buildings and a couple smaller ones, couchers and coaches, I think, or, I don't know. Anyhow, when you create a TIF, all right, you freeze the tax base?
Yep, that's your.
And what happens, I mean, all the properties in there, oh, let's just say, vans for one, places like that that are in, they're in the TIF, they're. places like that, that are in, they're in the TIF, their taxes, their assessed value does not change.
No, 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 no. Let me give you an example that makes it really easy. The bank, Walgreens, QuickTrip, they're all in the TIF, but none of them took any money from the TIF. So, you had the, the one lot was probably, let's just, I'm going to give you an example, was bringing in $1,000 in property taxes. Now that Walgreens is there, it's bringing in, let's say, $10,000, but only 1,000 still comes to us. The 9,000 goes to pay that until we close the TIF, then we get all 10,000. So.
Okay, so.
So, you're not freezing anything. The assessments still go up. You're freezing the amount of taxes that the entities get until the TIF is closed.
But you said Walgreens in this example took no money from the TIF.
Took no money, so it's.
Just that money.
Well, they didn't, they didn't, we didn't give them any money to help come there.
And why would a business choose that?
Well, because they can do it quicker. And I don't know why the bank, but QuickTrip was offered, but they said, no, it slows us down. If you watched how fast that QuickTrip moved, they had the one closing, the new one out within months. So, they, there's a process and they just didn't want to dink around it, they didn't need it.
They didn't need to.
Right. But that's a huge benefit for us because they're automatically paying into it without us having to give them any borrowed money.
We, but, all right, then what happens is the village as a taxing entity does not get any more money from any property if, if the, the, any, any increment goes into the TIF rather than into the village coffers, right?
Correct.
For the duration of the, for the duration, so.
And that's all, that's all taxing jurisdictions?
Yes, the school.
Well, all the taxing jurisdictions, but nobody, well, I mean, I think about it because it's villages us, but we don't get any more money from any property within the TIF. We don't get any more money, or no, nobody else does either, until this thing either times out or pays off, right?
You, I mean, if the tax rate goes up, you would get more. It's just the assessment stays the same. The base value.
The guarantee.
The base value on which we are, we are taxing stays the same, the base, even if.
Right. But, but she's right.
Maybe the assessed value may go up.
Right, but I guess my example, I made it to something.
Yeah.
If that $1,000, if we raise taxes to.
10% and you get 1,100.
10%, so then we'd get 1,100.
Okay, if we, if we had, if we.
They still get the increase.
We'd have a mill rate, that's, that.
Yes.
Okay.
But it's the dollar assessed value that is.
One of the things I noticed, one of these reports was that the increment went up and our tax dollars went down for properties within the TIF. And I was wondering how that, how did that happen? We, we started, we were getting, our budget showed we were getting less from the.
You know, I think it would be if the assessment goes down.
Well, okay.
Right?
I mean, we have that kind of situation where the assessment, assessment actually.
I don't know how that would have happened.
Or if your tax rate went down.
The what?
Yeah.
We'd have to see the example.
Is that what you're thinking, like the Landson Building?
Well, I, maybe something like that.
I'd have to see the example.
Yeah, we'd have to dig in, but generally that doesn't.
Well, it was weird. It was the year, I think, after the assessment, because all the property values went up and because of that, the mill rate went down because the budget didn't increase that much, is I think is what he's referring to. That's when our mill rate actually decreased because all these, everything was assessed so much more than our budget didn't go up that much. So, the mill rate per thousand went down in that year.
And so, those properties just got less money from those properties because the mill rate went down.
Gets it. All right, that was, yeah, okay.
I guess, I'm just trying to figure out how you, how you get there.
Well, that would do it.
Yep.
All right, I'm sorry about that.
Are we good?
Yeah.
All right. We will talk a few quick things about our TIF specifically. It is a rehabilitation conservation type. It was created August 2008. Expenditure period ends in 2030 and then our term date is August 2035 unless we close early. Our base value was a little over 28 million. As of last year was 62 million. So, our increment last year was 34,363,800, which is great. I think that's already above what they projected at the end of the TIF. And I think a lot of that has to do with the reassessment. Not a lot, but so. So, the tax increment payments that we've received so far total 20% of what our project plan said we should spend, which I believe was like 11 million something.
27% in 12 years of the, no.
Yeah, close to that, but it, it, it's not that, because we didn't get the money out right away.
Yeah.
Does that, does that base value reflect the lots that were taken out of the TIF after it was created?
What lots?
Did we remove, I thought some lots were removed because their value went down or with the reconstruction?
This is like the new base value.
Yeah, so that's not what it was when it was first created.
Correct.
I know we, in, one time we made a change where we brought more in, the bank, I remember.
I know, yeah, there's like three different base values.
Okay.
And then again, here's just our boundary map. It's mostly Main Street, Bourbon Road, where our businesses are.
How many times have we changed the map, do you know?
I do not know.
Well, I thought you just said three. There's three.
There's three.
Because they can't do it, or we can't do it one more time.
You can do it four times.
Yes, we can only do it one more time.
I think we've done it three.
I think we've done it three.
Okay.
The last time's it. Then there's a Wisconsin State Statute, the Equalized Value Limit, says the increment value cannot exceed 12% of the total equalized value of taxable property within the village. And we're at 8%, so we're.
Can you go back? Yeah, so like Bourbon Road, for example, if the property is owned by the village, like, you know, we own some property on Bourbon, can the village take advantage of that?
Well, we could, we did, I mean, we did village projects in this TIF. I mean.
That's my question, yeah.
Yes, the answer is yes.
It's not just private developers, like we can take advantage of.
Yes, we can do projects that are covered by the TIF, yep. And we have.
I think that was pretty much it. Any further questions? We try to keep it a little short and simple.
So, the, the annual report on the taxing of the district three, which is our district, will be in July. And that's where questions, specific questions about.
How the TIFs.
That, how the TIFs forming can be asked and that it's, that's a public meeting, so anyone can attend.
Do we often, I know the last time we were approached about with the hardware store that then, did, they changed their minds or they couldn't do it? Do we have any interest from, does that happen or do we have to kind of go out looking for it or?
It, it depends. We do get developers from time to time that ask about the tax increment district and developing within the district. Trick is finding one that will fit and then you have the question of what is the ask of the village at that point and whether or not we're in a position to be lending money or providing a pay-as-you-go plan. So, yes, we've had people ask, in particular to a hardware store, know at this point?
No, right, but I mean, in general, do, do people know about this and they look it up and they come, like, does anyone want to come to cross plans?
Yes, we've had quite a few in regards to more residential, multi-residential housing.
The last, the last three apartments that went up were all within the TIF district.
Bourbon and the Main Street?
The one in Bourbon and two on Main Street.
You gotta realize at some point you tap out of what you can give out. And I don't know how close we are, we gotta be pretty close, I would think.
Well, that and.
You give yourself pretty big dollar amounts out.
That and what is available has green space in the district for development. You run into issues with things like whether the lots buildable, environmental corridors, and then you start looking at lots that potentially could be demo and rebuilt on. So, and that kind of all goes into, you know, what the market is and which developers are looking, you know, at cross claims. But yeah, we, we, we get developers in here asking and we haven't had a serious one yet. So, once we do, we'll bring that forward.
Now, just a point of building, Jay, alter attention on the, if there was a new TIF, there's some great differences, there's something called developer for the TIF as well.
Yeah.
Which in this case, the developers pay the cost and the TIF proceeds are basically paid by the developer. Actually, in that case, the village would not have been taking out a loan, right?
Yeah.
And getting paid back on the developer, basically, is their cost and they're getting paid back.
Is this something?
The increment will be basically paid by the developer.
Right.
So, they pay the village back.
Right. Pay out.
Does the village, he had someone in the business say that's in the TIF that leaves the community and what impact does that have on the TIF that we were coming on, you know, your financial picture?
Yeah, so, I believe almost all of the agreements that we have when we lend out money, we have an assessment guarantee. So, they're promising, and we talked about that earlier today, they're promising that their billing is going to meet a certain assessment rate and so that we can make sure that, that loan's being paid back on. In the instances where you're talking about a development that did not use tax increment financing, if they do move out or their assessment does lower, you do lose that impact in your, your increment district. But at that point, your more dollars invest, you're not invested in that property. So, you can protect your, there's, there's several ways that you can protect yourself in setting up these agreements. But, yeah, I mean, that's, I mean, this is my personal opinion is that tax increment district, uh, tech, tax increment financing is a great tool in certain situations, not necessarily in all situations.
Very interesting.
So, tonight, like how Esther Place is selling and they already had an agreement, had, could we send them and then they would have to sell it without the TIF? I'm just asking.
Oh, no, no. What we want to make sure is that they agree because that's one of them that has a guarantee. They have to give us so much money every year, doesn't matter what their assessment's at.
Right, okay.
So, that's the key to that. I mean, businesses are going to sell, you know, like meth case, they were selling the apartment building.
Right.
As long as they have this understanding that it's not necessarily, there's a guarantee payment that they have to give up, no matter what the building is assessed at and what our mill rate is. And that's what we did most of them at. I think the Assistant Living is Pay As You Go, I think, was the only one.
But like some of them, I think like Piggly Wiggly and Coaches already paid off.
Oh, yeah, that was, that was in TIF too.
Right, that are paid off.
Yeah.
I, you said really a one?
Right. No, we're not, we're at number three. You have to keep going so there isn't confusion.
So, there was a different TIF?
Oh, we've had two TIFs, right.
That's close, they're not, they're not close.
Oh, what was that one?
The very first one was to actually put them all in.
Yes, yeah.
And then.
And Piggly Wiggly was part of it? No, you talked, yeah.
And all the condos and, and the second one, I'm not clear. I think that might have been.
It was part of Coaches.
The, the tall building would have been one and, I, they've been all pretty much downtown.
Yeah.
I just don't.
I was thinking Landson and.
Oh, maybe that was it too. Landson, I think, was part of it. I think so.
Yeah, because there was, there was some talk like, well, wait a minute, we didn't get as good business out of that as was originally intended, you know, we ended up, you know.
Well, all of, we've closed all of ours with being positive, so we, we haven't had a bust one yet, not this one clearly will be. I mean, look at all the revenue we'll be getting in once and comes, we close it. All righty, thank you very much, Bobby.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, we're gonna go to your second one. Number seven, the 2019 Preliminary Annual Financial Report. It's in a memo form. Does anybody have any questions for, on that?
I was very impressed with having that information there and just giving us an idea of where we are, particularly with over and under budget and fund balance and that stuff like that. Really useful information I don't remember seeing before.
I don't think we've done it before, yeah.
We have Cabinet Bill.
Could you please explain the Expenditure Restraint Program Payment? What does that mean?
So, this, it's a state, right? Yep. If we don't increase our budgeted expenditures for like our general fund, I think they, they give us a percentage, it's around 3%. It changes every year. So, if we keep our expenditures increased, like that 3% over the prior year, we get a payment, like an incentive payment to keep our expenses low. So, our 2018 budget qualified for that so that we would receive that payment in 2019. It was like 50,000-ish.
60,845. Interesting. So, we got an incentive to keep our spending low?
Yes, and.
From the state, the state gave us 60,000.
We won't be receiving it in 2019.
We usually get over 100,000.
That's your bill allowance.
But, but that has a history of having flowing, so.
The state's portion, the state's payout or?
Uh, qualifying for that program.
Yeah. Thank you.
Bill?
So, we need a motion to accept the annual financial report, correct?
Well, this is, this is just a memo. This is kind of giving you highlights of the audit. No, no.
This is not the audit, okay.
Audit will come later, yeah.
Yeah.
This doesn't even include several audit entries. Like, there's quite a bit of still busy.
Okay, good, okay, thank you.
This is clearly information wrong.
This had to take you a while. Thank you. Oh, I have to take it a while.
Anybody else have any questions?
I'm sorry, I got one more.
Yeah, no, you don't talk about it.
Uh, yeah, the, um, this is maybe a question for Bobby or maybe for Sarah, being that she's on Park and Rec Committee. The fund, the Park and Rec Committee is looking at a fund balance policy in 2020 to come up with an idea how to, how to use excess funds. Do they, is there a current policy that exists and it's just being updated or is there no policy that exists?
The only policy we have is for the general fund.
Yeah.
And so, since the Parks and Rec Fund has been doing well the last few years, I just kind of suggested like, you know, hey, you guys need to, your committee needs to come up with something like, is there a threshold, like, we should only be keeping this much fund balance and then the rest, we need to, you know, present ideas, like, how are we gonna, you know, do we want to put that towards a playground instead of borrowing money, use that fund balance? Or do we want to, you know, they're not in charge of how the money gets spent. They just.
Yeah, so I was wondering, is this an internal little PD policy or is this a policy that I'll come to the board for?
Oh, no, absolutely the board.
Yeah.
Yep, no. The Parks and Rec Committee would just kind of give suggestions or ideas.
And that's for that, we're coming up with a strategic plan similar to what, like, we have for capital of the other big plans, just to.
They just, they had some new programs that did well above projections and so they kind of this pot of money that built up the last couple of years and.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. So, then we're going to go back to the first one off of, thank you, Bobby. Consent Agenda. Number three is the Employee Merit Pay Matrix. I guess my whole thing on this, if we go back to it, it seems a little odd to me that if we're looking at a scale of one to 100, you get 50 to 69, you still get merit pay. I mean, if you look at that, to me, that's like getting a D or F. I'm, I'm just wondering the logic in these or is the?
So, well, full disclosure is, is this, this has been in place or it's been voted on and, and approved since 2015. So, I don't know how this, they came up the scale, first and foremost, but.
All right, well, and that's fine, I'm not, I'm just wondering if everybody's comfortable with that, Bill?
I am, because if you look at, if you look at how the, how the questioners or how the,
I am, because if you look at, if you look at how the, how the questionnaires or how the number is, is derived, that 50 to 69 is you're doing your job. The 70 to 84 is you're doing your job above average and the 85 to 100 is you're doing your job exceptionally. So the 1% is, hey, you're doing your job, you get a, you know, you get a merit raise for, for doing well. Anything below that, you're not getting anything and that's very typical in a lot of businesses.
Well, I must be, the scale is one to five, three is, I'm guessing what you say is doing your job, right?
Yep.
So one category had worth 50 points, so three times, the 10 questions would be 30. The other has, if I remember right, was 90, right? If I remember right, so that's basically 18, three times 18 is 30 to 50 some, so really 84 is average.
Okay.
If I, I mean, tell me if my math is wrong, but three, three is average, right, and there were 10 questions.
No, three out of.
The scale was one to five.
Three out of five is, is a 60% rate.
Yeah, three out of five is 60.
But you.
No, 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 you're right, you're, I'm right.
I mean, you guys filled it out for Bill, so when you looked at the scale, there were 10 questions, the scale was one to five, average was three.
Yep.
So three times 10 is 30. Then you go down to the next section and I believe there's 18 parts, right? Because it scored a total of 90 with the scale of one to five, right?
Yeah.
So three times 15, if you want to, or 18 I mean, is 54, so 54 plus 30 is 84. So to me, average is 84.
I thought, I'm treating those independently, I mean, you got a 60% here.
Well, but I think they totaled it up to 100 and, it was 100 and.
140.
140.
Yeah, and this goes only up to 100.
Well, no, this is just going to percent.
Percent, right, right.
But 140, you have 140 total points. Yeah, right. So even half, so 50% is 70.
Right.
Okay, so 50 to 69 is way below average.
So what would you change?
No, I'm, I'm just, I'm, I'm.
By your math, what do you think?
I'm throwing this out on, on what people are thinking, I understand this has been going on, but doesn't make sense to everybody. I'm not looking for any action on this right now, but I'm wondering, is this something we should be looking at? And clearly, I'm gonna be bringing it up to staff next week, their thoughts on it. I mean, I, I don't know, I mean, it seems like a pretty low standard to be giving merit pay to someone who's not even hitting average. I, am I feeling, I mean, tell me I'm crazy if you want, but you're dead wrong, I don't care, I'm just.
So for our company, because I do, I do this annually, is I have to evaluate my employees and if they, if, they will only get a merit raise if they're performing their job at what their job posting is. So if they're performing under, they're not getting a raise nor are they getting a bonus. So, so I have to hit that 50% from our business point of view before they get anything at all. And then from there, it goes to they're above average or they're exceptional, nobody gets exceptional. So it's really, they're getting.
Well, that's too bad because I think there are people out there that are exceptional, but.
There are, but this is, this is company standard, so.
I, I guess I agree, I don't think that you should get a merit raise for doing your job. At, like, just meeting your job performance.
Just showing up.
To, you know, like, I think, but that's my.
No, I agree, I, I do believe you deserve something, I mean, it is an incentive to do.
If you do better than just basic performance of like, of your job.
But people are happy to just have employees show up.
I'm just saying that's.
No, no, I appreciate, I mean, like I say, I'm not, I'm not that tight on it, I still believe that if, if you do your job, you should get something that that gives you the incentive to continue. I don't think people who are going below should get rewarded.
Well, they should, you'd think they should keep their job.
Well, there are some people that, okay, well, let's face it, you're gonna have people who, yeah, but you may not be at the level where you can get rid of somebody, it's difficult to get rid of somebody.
Or, or, or you've got somebody who just started and they haven't gotten to that point.
Right, yeah, for less than a year in your position.
I'm still seeing on a scale of one to five, that three out of five is 60%.
Yeah.
Okay, so if you're at 60%, you're doing your job, I mean, now. You suppose that everybody is just doing their job, but I mean, I'm thinking that if your score comes out at, at a 60% level.
And maybe that's what they used, but that's not how the numbers go.
And well, that's my interpretation, what I was seeing here, doing your job is a three and that's three out of five is 60%.
No, that, you're, you're, you're absolutely correct on each of those, you have that, but I, I think you have to look at the total work, you can't look at the scale, you're working on the scale. Yeah, no, and I'm guessing that's how they did it.
How you rate anybody?
So, right, so, so, would this make more sense? So if somebody's on target for their job, would you give them a merit raise? If they have a job description and they're doing everything that you're supposed to be doing in a job description, would you give them a merit raise? Forget about the numbers.
And, and, yeah, 1%, yeah, that's.
Okay, and then if you're doing above average, would you give them a little bit better bump?
Oh, for sure.
Exactly, if they're doing amazing, you give them even a better bump, that's all this is saying.
You're quantifying it with a, with a number, but really look at the categories that you're, that you're using as margins
and say, is this person doing their job description like they should be doing it? If they are, reward them, if they're not, it's a good time to do some training, to do some, you know, work with them, to get them up to that skill level, whatever the case may be.
So here's what I think, I, I think what I'll do is I'm gonna talk with staff about it next week and then we can maybe have this actually on the agenda where, I think it needs to be discussed. It seems like there are differences of opinions here, maybe it's time to review this, it's been five years and we can get from staff if it's working, not working, I mean, I think someone brought that up tonight and we make these decisions, but we never check to see, you know, if it's working or not. So maybe this is a perfect example of something where it may stay the same, but I do think we might want to put this in the future agenda, so let me bounce, I guess what I'm looking at is I'm gonna bounce it off. We'll keep it for this year because it's way too late to change that, but let me just listen to staff and if we think it needs to have a discussion, then we'll put it on a future agenda. Everybody comfortable with that, put it there? Alright, very good. Alright, so then we're gonna go to number five, which is the appointment of the village administrator slash board to gateway to the Driftless area board and Bill, I think.
I pulled this. I did, because they're asking for a, they're asking for you to be on their board and another village trustee to be on their board, is that correct? Is that what I read?
Well, they want, no, there's one spot.
Okay.
And I felt, they offered it to me, but I felt it was much more appropriate for Bill because he's much more in the loop of all the things that are going on and since this is a regional kind of area, I thought it was much better for Bill to be on, so I asked him, he was okay with it. So I submitted his name versus me being on there. With the players that are on there, you know, they're at economic development, the flooding, and Bill has all the background on that.
I just misread that because I thought they, I thought they wanted you and another trustee on that and it's like, I didn't think we were at that point with these guys, but now it makes more sense.
I, the email, if I remember, was just.
Yeah, they sent out, yeah, so they, they sent this letter initially and then they sent out a second email with Meizo and Black Earth and who they had appointed and I believe in Meizo, they also appointed the village administrator there. And then Black Earth, I think they were still deciding on who to appoint at that point.
Yeah, they're waiting for the election, I think is what you said.
Okay.
Okay, so I'm, I'm good, I'm, so I'll, you know, I make a motion to approve. Five.
Oh, I forgot to.
Oh, I'll make a motion.
Thank you, yeah, yeah. Okay, we'll go back. We'll go back, so let's do this, go ahead, make the motion.
I'll make a motion, we approve the appointment for Bill to be the Driftless of the Gateway area board member.
Do I have a second?
Can we just make that the village administrator position?
Oh, sure.
I'm sorry.
So you're not naming that personally?
Village administrator, apologies.
Alright, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Lori, second, and any other discussion on that, Judy?
I just want to make sure, Bill, you feel like you got time for this because this, I mean, this is taken away from your job, I know this is your job, this is taken away from your daily. Do you feel good about it?
Yeah, I imagine that, that these are quarterly, so they don't have too much time and it's good to know what they're doing regionally to support us locally.
Yeah, that was the same concern, I would just say that Judy had, I mentioned it to Chris from the Gateway as well and he did say that it would be high level meetings, not as, not that frequent. And then I looked at it and I looked at it with the other lens and thought, this is a great way to work with communities that we've sort of loosely associated with before, this would be great, I think to.
I, I, I think the future for us to be successful is cooperation with people around us, it's just the way it's gone. We can't just be by ourselves anymore. Alright, now we'll have to go back and my air, oh, oh, we gotta hold it. Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
The whole same, the move. Alright, now we'll go back and get the approval for the 2020 Employee Merit Pay Plan.
I'll make a motion that we approve the 2020 Employee Merit Pay Plan as presented.
One second.
Any other discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same, so. I know, I, I go too fast. Alright, so we will need a motion to go into closed session.
I'll make a motion to go into closed session.
Do I have a second?
Take it.
Second from Lee, roll call both, please.
Trustee Broseus?
Yes.
Trustee Vander?
Yes.
Trustee France.
Yes.
Trustee Busios?
Yes.
Trustee Florenson?
Yes.
Trustee Kinnbolder?
Yes.
President Link.
Yes.
Are you, are you staying or going or?
I'm gonna turn that off first and then however you guys want to.
Do it.
Well, I guess I'm not real clear on what the expectation of Ken Proder would be.